Good evening, everybody. Going to go ahead and call to order the called meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council for today, March 21st, 2023. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I'm going to say a little word about what we're doing here, but first let's go ahead and move to the adoption of the agenda.
I move to approve the adoption of the agenda.
Second?
Motion by the Vice Mayor, second by Mr. Holmes. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Question, did we need to have the closed session for personnel?
Yes, we need a closed session.
Okay. In that case, I will make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented with one addition. At what point, at the end?
Yeah, this is the end.
A closed session at the end for personnel matters.
So for clarity, so since the agenda has been adopted, you want to make a motion to add a closed session?
Correct.
Okay. So the motion is to add a closed session for personnel?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pollard, second by Mr. Farnham. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right. First item is presentation by outside agencies. So basically, tonight, we're going to hear from our DMO, which is Discover Bristol, and from Explore Bristol. I'm excited to hear from both organizations. I think that tourism services are very important to our city and what we're trying to do here and what we're trying to grow. So I look forward to these presentations. You know, I think there will be some questions from all members to both organizations. I look forward to getting into that. The way this will run, ideally, we'd want to go in alphabetical order, but I believe there was a timing issue with someone who wanted to call in to be on the line with Discover Bristol. So we're going to have Explore Bristol go first, and I believe Mr. Bolus is here to present, so whenever you're ready.
Hello, I'm Matt Bolus. I'm Executive Director of Explore Bristol. Our formal name is the Bristol Regional Tourism Marketing Corporation. It's a little bit of a longer name, but we go by the brand Explore Bristol. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, and we appreciate the invitation to come out. I'm going to go quickly, so there's a lot that we have been doing. This presentation I have, anyone is welcome to it. We're very open in what we do. We are glad to share the kind of work that we are. Continuing. So again, we're the Bristol Regional Tourism Marketing Corporation. It is a 501(c)(6). It's an independent nonprofit. This was filed and approved in June of 2021, and Explore Bristol is our operating name for branding and for how people can find us, because, you know, Bristol Regional Tourism Marketing Corporation is a little bit of a long name, but that is our formal entity. It's filed through the federal government, and we have two staff. I am the Executive Director. I was hired in August in 2021 after the organization was established by the board. And then we hired a... Oh, we're back. We hired John Scott, who is our Director of Creative Content. And my background, I've been in tourism for 25-plus years. I started at the Kingsport Convention and Visitors Bureau. I've been at Discover Bristol. I left to go to an opportunity at the High Road Agency where I worked with over 20 different tourism offices from all across the country. So that was a very unique learning experience. It's kind of like being the Wizard of Oz. You could see behind the curtain and see how things really work from digital publication. So it was a great experience. And then when this was an opportunity, I did apply and was hired and started in August. John, some people may not know John Scott, but John is from our area. He's actually from Scotland, truth be told. He went to King on a golf scholarship, fell in love here, got married, has a child, and worked at High Road Agency. And I knew it would be cost-efficient for us to bring someone who has those abilities in-house in working with media and marketing. And he has the ability to design websites. He has the ability to do video production. He's a drone pilot. So we do our stuff in-house. So what I'm showing you is everything that we do in-house, and we also loan that off to some nonprofits that I'll explain here a little bit later. We try to help out the community if anyone needs some of our services at no charge. This is our branding. We went through some branding options, and our board selected this option. It's kind of got a mountain feel to it. It also could be a shoreline. You know, with their lines being very important in Bristol, as we know, we wanted to play off of that. So it's very bold, and we went with bright and warm colors. Our organizational structure, I put this slide in here because I thought it would be interesting to know how we work with government entities if they want to be a part of our organization and be on that board that does direct our activities. Our board approves our budgets. They approve our financials every month. They approve our marketing. They go through all of those. Every month, we present what we do, and we take input from the board based on our research, based on our stats, and we continue to push what they like to see as being marketing. So if you look, we have one voting seat, which is basically $100,000 a year, or two voting seats, which is $200,000 per year. We also have an ex officio seat option. We are talking and working with other government entities within Bristol and the region who have expressed interest, and we are continuing that conversation as we promote Bristol and the surrounding area. There is a maximum that we do have on our board, so it doesn't get overwhelmed. So for example, if the City of Bristol, Virginia wanted to have one voting seat, that's fine. They can pick who that person could be. It can be a council member. It can be a city manager. It can be someone in your community. That person is just approved by the Board of Directors, as is would be with any other Board of Directors at a nonprofit. They vote who is on the board. I wanted to show our budget this past year. Did a lot of... Pulled a lot of opportunities in going after grants. We have advertising opportunities, like in our visitor guide, and I'll hand out our visitor guide as well, to generate income. And then also with our partners. And our operating budget this year is about $650,000. And as you can see, our goal is to be less than 40% in operations. Right now, we're running at 30.4%, so it's about 30%. And that's staff, insurance, supplies, and all those fun things that we all get to do in our daily businesses. So we try to put as much as we can in marketing. And so when you see some of the things that we do in some of the publications and the digitals that we have done, those monies are going toward marketing to bring people to Bristol. Now, we're going to see if this works. This is a quick... Oh, it will work. Okay. This is a quick video. This is just an example. I want to show a little bit about what we do in-house. This is a snowy day, ran out to South Holston. We pushed this on social media, websites, digital marketing. So I'm going to go through these a little bit quicker, because I know we're pushed for time, because we have about 50 different videos that you probably don't want to see all of. We did a fall campaign this past year. We spent about $20,000 to push, to attract people to come and fall in love with Bristol. And those are through publications, through digital marketing, to people who are interested in leaves, to see the beauty that we have. We have a lot of that around here. So this was a good fall campaign, and our goal was to drive people here, stay in our hotels, spend money, shopping, nightlife, hit downtown. So we tried to grab some of our newer assets and do a fall campaign as well. We also can... We ran out to the casino. You know, we'll run out there. This was during Media Day that we went out to grab some assets for them, and we push a lot on social. So when we put on social, almost everything we do is boosted and targeted. That is a tactic that is very important to us, and I can show you some numbers here in a second about why that is important. So the two primary would be Facebook and Instagram. We also do some on YouTube and then different digital aspects. So again, this is another one of our little video vignettes that we push. All of this has written content that goes with it. It's telling you, go to Hard Rock, plan your fall escape. There are... There is written content to back those up. I'm just showing the visuals. We advertised in the Tennessee and Virginia Travel Guide. We thought that was very important. So we have ads in both publications that do promote Bristol, and so we wanted to show those to you. We're very excited to be in both publications, and we do generate a lot of leads from that, and we send them... We have them subscribe, those subscribers to our newsletter, and we send visitor guides to them. In terms of social media, we are proud to have the largest social media following for a tourism office. This is something we really pushed hard on, and when we started in November of 2021, we've grown tremendously, and we continue to grow. As we look through some of our top posts and what people like to see and our impressions, you know, we have over 20 million impressions just from our Facebook alone with 102,000 clicks from and over, almost 700,000 engagements. And when you look at ROIs based on that, you know, the standard is $12 per thousand impression. So the value of what we've been able to do in pushing our social is about $244,000, and we're really pleased with how our social has turned into pushing traffic to entities, to hotels, to Airbnbs, to do all of those things that can encourage visitors to come here. We also host social media influencers. In fact, we're hosting media tonight with the Birthplace Country Music Museum. We couldn't be there at Hickory, so they're in town for tomorrow's event. So we have them coming, and we appreciate their partnership. Leah Ross, I thank you. She's our Chair of the Board for Explore Bristol, and we do a lot of partnerships. And so bringing social media influencers, this is one. This is Jared Kreis. He has about 50,000, 60,000 followers. Jared does some really high-end activities. We met with him again today. He's coming back to the area in April, and he's going to be doing more of a foodie focus, primarily around downtown and hitting some of our other unique local foodie attractions. So just wanted to show a little bit of that. Also, we put the steps in the airport. We thought that was important to welcome visitors that come through into the area. We met with the airport to see what opportunities there were. We've had a lot of comments about this that were very positive. And the way we did it, because those are strips, we can also change out attractions or add attractions as we need. So those are all decal'd, and it has a really good impression. If you've flown, you'll see it when you land. So we thought that was something that would be really important, and it is kind of left side Virginia, right side Tennessee. We wanted to kind of resemble the sign a little bit in doing that, and so Virginia's for Lovers and Tennessee Tourism, because we do appreciate everything we do with them. We actually go and approach bus companies. This is our booth that we have to promote. We did a booth at American Bus Association. It's the largest group tour conference in the country. We spent six days in Detroit, Michigan. There were over 350 group tour companies that attend. There were 54 individual appointments. The Birthplace Country Music, we also... They came with us as well. We partnered with them, and that is a huge hook for us. We were selling the casino. We had a lot of questions about casino. Rayshacks, we've already had some phone calls about that, and next year, we'll be attending as well to do sponsorship and extending that partnership with other people that may be interested. And later this year, we'll also have partnerships with Travel South USA and Tennessee Motor Coach in June. A bus is very important, by the way. When you see a bus, clap your hands, because a hotel loves a bus, and we are now finally getting those buses starting to call. That is something that has taken a little bit longer from the pandemic to bounce back, but when you think of a bus, they have 50 seats, which is about 25 to 30 rooms at a hotel. And then when you add those 50 or so people downtown, for example, that go out to dinner or go shopping or go to a museum, they spend a lot of money in your area. They can spend $4,000 or $5,000 a day. So when you see those buses, wave at them, say hello. That's money going through our community. We also partner with other nonprofits to help out a little bit. With Border Bash, we did boosted social to boost each one of these concerts, but we also did the graphic design at no charge to assist them so that, you know, they have more assets and more money to do what they need to do, and that is bring people to downtown. We also worked with Born in Bristol. We ran television commercials on Circle TV Network through live streams and also on Grand Ole Opry podcasts, when the Born in Bristol, which is the documentary that, as you all know, was probably six, seven, gosh, seven, eight years ago when it was done with Tennessee Tourism and Virginia Tourism, and finally could be released. And we did run television commercials through Grand Ole Opry, and we were able to get...
Hi, everybody. This is Marty Stewart.
Marty Stewart. So Marty Stewart's talking about coming to the Birthplace of Country Music, and then we talk about some of the other attractions as well to go through. So this was targeted to fans of Grand Ole Opry, of country music, and all that good stuff. So... Trying to get a little quicker here. We did Christmas as well. Christmas is another campaign. We spent $20,000 as well on a Christmas campaign to geofence different light programs. So we geofenced light displays in Richmond, Dollywood, and we targeted them with ads and video to, hey, come to Bristol. Come do your holiday here. Come see the lights. Come to downtown. Come shop. You know, come to the casino. Come spend a weekend. So we did... Those are... That one's about a minute and a half. That's a long version, that's why I'm cutting it. All these are online, too. I can send to you. But you can see a little bit of our Winter Wonderland results. We had a lot of impressions for it on YouTube. We had about 147,000 impressions on YouTube. So we were excited from a lot of the deliveries, and we also have even more data to say which of those holiday light programs did people go to, like Biltmore and Asheville. Which ones of those people that went there actually came to Bristol? Geofencing is another strategy that we extended over to music. So we geofenced... And geofencing is when you draw a digital perimeter around a concert venue. So for example, if it was Rhythm and Roots and someone was geofencing Rhythm and Roots during the days of the festival, anyone who steps in that footprint will be served ads after they leave on their cell phones, computers, whatever. It's how we track you, so to speak. So we're stealing your identity? No, we're not doing that. We are tracking you and serving you ads based on you going through those areas. So we know music is so important here, so we wanted to go to as many festivals as we could to geofence all of those... Oops, it went the wrong way. I'm going the wrong way. Let me go this way. And we serve them ads. These are landing page ads that they'd be served on phones. They can't... This is obviously the creative from last year. We have new creative that'll be coming out soon to push people to do some of the major concert events like Rhythm and Roots, Country Thunder, Birthplace of Country Music Museum. When we also did outdoors as well. So, you know, geofencing the Blue Ridge Parkway, so people on the Blue Ridge Parkway got served outdoor ads. Again, this is part of our fall ad. We partnered with Northeast Tennessee and Visit Johnson City to split up some of the two-page spreads, and just wanted to show a little bit of that visual. And also hosting traveler riders. This is National Geographic Traveler Dutch. They talked highly of the Bristol Hotel. Google Translate isn't 100%, but they liked it here from our translation. So they came off the Blue Ridge Parkway and came into Bristol. So we do host different media that comes in, and NPR came in during Rhythm and Roots, did interviews with them, and they have done multiple interviews, sent different shows that focus on their time here. We also have media coming in. In two weeks, we have Blue Ridge Traveler coming in. They are coming here for the weekend as well. Google Analytics, wanted to show a little bit about this. This talks about some of our top visitor markets. Nashville, Atlanta, they're always in our top two. And just, we can drill down more, but I just wanted to give a quick sweep over. And then our last thing that we announced at Christmas time, right before the holidays, was we are doing a visitor center, so we have a permanent home. So these are just a few images of the visitor center. It is located where, at the West Davis Greenway. We have a 30-year contract for $1 a year, and we are building the visitor center. We will own and operate the visitor center through there, and we will partner with entities in the area and hotels. And the visitor center, some of the highlights will be that it will have extended hours and weekend hours and can reach people, and that will be its focus in that location. So that's a little bit about what we have. I know I went quick. I do have our visitor guide that I don't... I can... I don't know if I can approach the bench, but... But the visitor guide, we produced 75,000 of these this year. We also have a digital version online. Those are in all the Tennessee Welcome Centers, and we then pay also to put them in the Virginia Welcome Centers. We also put them in 550 different brochure rack slots through print distribution that go along Interstates 81, 77, 40, 75, 26, and then some of the other arterial roads, artery roads that come in, like US 58, 421, and all of those, from Eastern Kentucky, Western Carolina, Southwest Virginia, and Northeast Tennessee. So that's... That was a quick nutshell of what we've been doing in the last year or so.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I think we're going to go ahead and open it up to questions here and see if any of us have any questions.
Is that presentation on your website, or can you send that to us?
Yeah, I can do... I can even bring flash drives tomorrow, or if you'd like to keep... You want me to keep that one or make duplicates? Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah. Absolutely. The answer is yes.
So I wanted to... I'm sorry, I didn't mean it. Any of y'all have any questions before I go ahead? So I wanted to talk to you about the boosted and targeted social media ads.
Sure.
So I think you... What did you say? You were... How much are you paying per impression?
Well, no, we're not paying that impression.
Right.
That is the value of impression.
Yeah.
That is what you would have to pay Facebook to get each like or each engagement or each share. It's just an ROI evaluation. In terms of how much do we spend per month on social? Is that what the boosted? We spend about $2,800 a month.
That's where I was getting to.
Yeah.
So about $2,800 a month?
Yeah.
So you're getting your return on investment?
Yeah.
Is your main avenue of social media advertising going to be Facebook most likely, or...
Well, the main...
I know you said Instagram was a big one, too.
Instagram's big. You know, Instagram is harder to grow. We do a lot of YouTube as well. We also do... We've done Waze. Those are kind of event-specific, and Pinterest is kind of up there a little bit, but we haven't pushed a lot on there. TikTok, we do advertise on TikTok. We do not have an Explore Bristol TikTok account, because there's some concerns over TikTok. However, you can advertise on TikTok without having an account. So for example, we did targeted TikTok ads to promote the artists of Rhythm and Roots to get them to book hotel rooms and buy tickets, because a lot of people on TikTok love music vignettes. So we have done some of those things as well. They're not in this presentation, but I can add everything, you know, if you'd like to see those.
One thing that I... One statistic I saw in your presentation that interested me was CTR, was click-through rate.
Okay, yeah.
Click-through rate. Is that pretty much on par? Because it looked like the number was... The click-through rate was fairly small. So is that pretty much on par with what you're expecting?
Geofencing is your hardest one to get. Yeah. So you get better click-through rates. Facebook's your best one. You get really good click-through rates if you target it correctly on YouTube and Instagram and through that. Whenever we run a geofencing or a targeted display campaign, it's not the only campaign that runs. It's layered. You don't ever want to run a geofence campaign that doesn't have other channels. Does that make sense? So if we're targeting, when we did geofencing for the concerts, we also did digital billboards in Asheville, Boone, Black Mountain areas, Roanoke. We also would do targeted YouTube and Facebook and Instagram ads in those same markets. So they're going to be served more than just something that pops up on their phone, so that it's a repeat kind of thing. So the click-through rate is lower on geofencing, but we also don't invest as much on that platform.
So for not for geofencing advertising necessarily, but for regular boosted ads, because I know you said a lot of them, most of your ads are boosted.
Yeah.
So what is the click-through rate on those? Are they better, or are they worse?
They're better. They're better. A lot better. And I can give you Facebook reports on ads. Whenever we post, we run a lot of ads. There's continuous ads that go through. We do not pay $12 a click, period. Those click-throughs are probably around $0.53.
Okay. So changing directions. On the group tours and bus sales stuff?
Mm-hmm.
I know you mentioned, I think it was in Louisville that you went to?
Wrong way. I'm sorry.
Went too far. It's okay.
No, I screwed up, Gene. I'm sorry.
There, it's back. I think you mentioned a conference you went to in Louisville, Kentucky. Was that where it was?
For American Bus Association, it was in Detroit this year.
It was in Detroit, I don't know where you went.
Yeah.
So how many of these conferences happen in a year roughly? How many do you all... Are you all represented at? Do you go to?
Yeah, we go to as many as we can. We got our booth this past fall, and we joined into the group tour foray, I guess you could say, this fall. There's as many as you want. There's probably 10 to 12 major bus company ones. We go to the ones that make sense for us. We don't go to Canadian Motor Coach, or we don't go to Youth Travel, because those are performing bands. There's all kinds out there. We focus on the ones that would benefit Bristol the most. In our opinion, it's American Bus, Travel South, and then some of the state Motor Coach shows, like Tennessee, North Carolina, Georgia, and we do go to those. We also will send our booth if we can't go. I'm actually out of town in June when Tennessee Motor Coach is, but we're shipping our booth down there with Tracy at the Birthplace so that the presence is there and our materials are there. So we do partner with our company, our tourism attractions. We're meeting tomorrow to see how we're going to do our booth for American Bus Association in Nashville, which is January of 2024. which is January of twenty twenty-four.
So how many, how many people usually have booths at these?
Oh.
If you just had to ballpark it.
I would say three hundred. And, and that can be cities or it can be attractions. Like Virginia tourism is there, Tennessee tourism is there. But you'll also see probably a booth from like, what's the, what's the brewery, or the distillery?
I'm sorry.
Jack Daniels. And, and some of those major brands will also be in attendance that offer tours.
I feel like I'm hogging all the time. Do y'all have any other questions?
I have one question. Mr. Bowles, it's nice to meet you finally. Can you explain a little bit about your board? You mentioned the, the cost per seat.
Yeah.
But I mean, can you tell us how many people are on this board? And, and who, who's on the board paying besides the city of Bristol, Tennessee? Cause that's all I've.
That's, cause we only approach government entities that want, that want us to be their representative for, representative community. We have had discussion with the other entities outside of the city of Bristol, Tennessee. And those conversations are continuing. And they're interested as well in being on the board. We have representatives right now from, we have Tammy Havens, for example, from Hampton Inn, or Fairfield Inn and Hampton Inn. We have Ex officio. We have Northeast Tennessee Tourism Association, Elisa Phelps. Maggie is there from Believe in Bristol. Leah's our chair. We have Brian Deal, who's a developer who lives in Meadowview, Virginia. We have two open seats right now because we had a retirement. And we have someone who had stepped off the board and an open seat that will be filled, which was Bristol Brewery, Kenmoniac, was our treasurer. So he has elected a step back, obviously, as that business has changed hands. So those people will be reappointed in, in July. Cause we are a fiscal year budget and we follow that with our board. So we have a board of about eight to nine individuals. We are holding some seats for individuals and entities. There's been conversation from the board of, of different, as you all know, larger entities that would, could serve those seats in the future.
So of the eight or nine, how many are non-voting versus voting?
There's nine voting and two, one, two, three ex officio. Three.
Okay.
And I can email to, I can email Mr. Eads of our board if.
If you could.
Yeah, I can do that.
Do you have any other questions?
I just, Mr. Bowles, good to see you. It's, it's been a while.
Good seeing you, yeah.
Just wanna say thank you for being here. We appreciate you, you talking to us and bringing this information to us. It's definitely important that we, as a community, see, see the whole picture and see, see what everybody's doing in our community. So thank you for that.
We appreciate the invitation. So if there's anything we can do, please let me know. Anyone has questions later. I'll also, my contact, Mr. Eads has my contact, my cell, probably everyone might have it. It's, it's circulating somewhere, I'm sure.
Very good. Well, thank you so much.
Thank y'all. Appreciate your time.
All right. So now we will hear from our, from our DMO, which is Discover Bristol. And whenever y'all are ready.
Good evening, Mayor Osborne and members of council. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak tonight. I know last week it was a little bit of a shorter presentation. Just wanted to keep within the five minutes of allotted time that was given. So wanted to go over a couple of the topics that there were questions regarding. And wanted to just maybe take a little bit of a deeper dive into a couple of the other categories. And again, willing to answer any of the questions that you have from the full deck presentation that I gave last week. But I first just wanted to have a special call out to a lot of our stakeholders and board members that are here on our behalf to show the support for our organization. We are doing work on the behalf of the city of Bristol, Virginia, but also on the behalf of the stakeholders and community partners. Many of them who can't do a lot of this promotional and marketing work on the, the level of some of our bigger attractions with large budgets like Bristol Motor Speedway and the Bristol Casino and the Birthplace of Country Music. So we're here to help them out to gain that exposure. But I wanted to spend a little bit of time. We have Relic Agency, they're an agency that's helped us with a lot of our campaigns that's on the phone to go over some of our digital advertising campaigns, talk through some of that information. I know Mayor Osborne, you had a couple of questions that you sent over via email. And if there's anything else that you might want to just say ahead of time to make sure that we're able to cover that or answer those questions appropriately. Happy to hear that before we get into that presentation.
You can go ahead.
Okay. Shaylee, can you hear us?
Yeah, we got you.
Perfect. I just wanted to give a quick introduction. You have Shaylee, Ryan and Macy from Relic. They're an agency that we've been working with since twenty twenty. As we were coming out of the pandemic and starting to do some of the advertising and promotional efforts, having a lot of CARES Act money and some other federal funds that were coming down, we needed to find an agency that really represented who we wanted to work with. And there was a lot of agencies that are out there. And we were really impressed with what the work Relic was doing. They, what really caught my eye initially was putting together basically launch trigger reports. And that was happening for each metro market out in the country of looking at what the COVID cases looked like, how those trends were happening, what the legislation within certain localities involved to see when was an appropriate time to launch or advertise, promote into a specific market to get them to come and visit here. They were doing that very strategically and cautiously. We wanna make sure that travel was safe during that time period. And we saw excellent results through that campaign of continued our work with them. So I just wanted to give a little bit of background on the agency that we're working with and the individuals that are gonna be helping show our successes from last year.
Thank you so much, Christopher. And thank you so much to the city council for having us. We are super excited to be here. Again, my name is Ryan Jones, the director of digital marketing here at Relic, joined with Macy, our digital marketing specialist, and Shaylee, our senior account manager. Just a brief about us, Relic is a holistic marketing company. We are structured to service tourism-related organizations across the country like Discover Bristol. We guide our clients through honing in their image, developing in-depth strategy, driving visitation growth and improving their visitor experience, leading to increased traveler spending and retention. Super, super excited about the work that we've been able to accomplish with Discover Bristol over the past year. So we've put together this quick presentation to kind of show some of the insights of what we've been working on and some of the metrics that we've been able to achieve together. Awesome. So in twenty twenty-two, the Relic digital team has assisted Discover Bristol in promoting the city of Bristol and all it has to offer through a mix of digital marketing efforts, including paid search, social media ads and display ads. Here's kind of a quick overview of some of the results that we've seen, including a hundred and seven thousand users acquired from paid search, twenty-five thousand users from display ads and twenty-four thousand users from our social advertising tactics. And all of these metrics were drastically up from the previous year, including a one thousand six hundred and one percent increase from twenty twenty-one for paid search, over two thousand percent increase in display ads and a five hundred and sixty-six percent increase in user acquisition in our social advertising channels. So through some of these advanced targeting advertising techniques, we've been able to promote Bristol to prevent potential visitors in major destination markets such as Atlanta, Nashville, Charlotte, Baltimore, Washington DC. And overall, some of these metrics here that you see on the right side of our presentation, we saw a one hundred and ninety-one percent increase in users to the Discover Bristol website, one hundred and thirty-five percent increase in overall page views and eighty thousand plus conversions. And our conversions are measured in what we consider quality traffic. And so time on site, pages in a session are going into those kinds of things. So really feel strong about some of the efforts that we've been able to accomplish. Next slide for me, Shaylee. So based on some of our analytics research that we really pride ourselves on here, we chose to define target audiences, starting with their locations, with their interests and relevant keyword search data. So by using all of these, we, we kind of collected a few of our target markets. We've segmented our audiences into their interests and relevant keyword data, what people are searching, how they're driving to the site. Here's just a few examples of, of audience segments and keywords that resonated with some of our ads in twenty twenty-two. And we also used over two thousand relevant keywords, one hundred and sixteen audience segments and to reach the targets in our five markets. So again, our markets, Nashville, DC, Charlotte, Atlanta and Baltimore. And some of these top performing audience segments included those interested in food and dining, travel buffs, outdoor enthusiasts, family vacationers, trips by certain destinations and luxury travelers. Some of the keywords that are driving people to the websites, dining, food, casinos, camping, things to do in Virginia and Tennessee, places to go, campgrounds. So we really were able to kind of hone in through, you know, a metric of, or a, a, multiple data points to really hone in on this target audience. And it's driven some great results, which we'll go over in our next kind of tactic slides. Awesome. So again, just another, another recap and kind of from that high level. Through paid search, display ads, social advertising on Facebook and Instagram and our Google Performance Max campaigns, we, we saw some great traffic throughout the year with paid search, display and social traffic accounted for over sixty-four percent of Discover Bristol's website traffic. Paid search alone accounted for thirty-nine point seven percent of all of the traffic in twenty twenty-two. And we saw great click-through rates and conversion rates in our audiences like outdoor enthusiasts, travel buffs and those interested in food and dining. So breaking down some of these tactics, we are kind of gonna work this through the top of the marketing funnel as they work down into our conversions. And so first we have our display ads. And display ads are, are one of our techniques that we use to help create brand awareness and recall by featuring visually appealing images or videos that capture the essence of your destination. They provide an opportunity to showcase unique features, attractions or experiences of a tourism destination. They can be targeted to specific audiences, such as those interested in travel or geographic locations. Next slide for me, Shaylee. And where display ads fit into the marketing funnel? They, they fit kind of towards the top as they generate awareness and interest by introducing potential visitors to the destination. They can also operate in the middle of the funnel where they drive consideration by targeting users who've shown interest in destination or related activities. And they complement all of the different parts of the marketing channels, such as our, our social media advertising or paid search, creating a more holistic and integrated marketing approach. And so we have some tactic, or some metrics here of what we have been able to accomplish for our display ads in twenty twenty-two. We had a total of over ten million impressions. It drove a hundred thousand website clicks, which was absolutely great. The average click-through rate was about point nine nine percent, which was above the industry average for travel and DMOs. That click-through rate for the national benchmark average was point four seven. The highest click-through rate that we saw resonating with users was in that Charlotte, North Carolina market, one point two percent. The average cost per click was eighteen cents with a lowest cost per click showing in Washington DC, which was down two point fourteen cents. And then that is also well below the travel average industry of forty-four cents. We saw sixteen thousand conversions. Again, we are measuring that with ten thousand of those sessions on a, pages on the website visited of two-plus pages. Over five thousand sessions to the website that were spent longer than a minute and sixteen seconds. We also had thirty-three requests for the Discover Bristol Visitor Guide. And overall, we spent around eighteen thousand dollars on this display campaign. These ads targeted some of those key markets of DC, Charlotte, Atlanta, Nashville. And again, really, really were excited about the way that these display campaigns performed as they surpassed some of those industry averages. We definitely recommend keeping these going in twenty twenty-three. This, we kind of have an example of, of some of these display ads and how they, they, you know, visually appealing to drive some of that website traffic. If you go to the next slide for me, Shaylee, we have kind of a mix of some of these top performing display ads. You can get an idea of the things that we're trying to promote and, and create, create some awareness. So you have some outdoor related activities, the Bristol Motor Speedway, the Bristol Casino and the Birthplace of Country Music. So all of these were kind of our top performing display ads. They look great and we really, really were excited about the way that some of these top of funnel channels worked and are excited about continuing that in, in twenty twenty-three. Next, you have our social ads. Social ads, of course, are, they're great to work in kind of the top of funnel or middle of funnel. They're, they help drive engagement and conversion by offering creative flexibility and the ability to tell a story or showcase a destination in visually compelling ways, fostering deeper connections with potential visitors to capture the essence of your destination. They provide an opportunity to showcase new features, attractions or experiences of a tourism destination. What we really love about these is they can be targeted to specific audiences based on demographic, geographic, behavioral factors and really maximizes the effectiveness of the advertising campaign. The top of the funnel, where social ads kind of fit in, they can also generate awareness and interest by introducing potential visitors to Bristol. In the middle of the funnel, they can drive consideration by targeting users who've shown interest in the destination or related activities. And they also drive conversions towards the bottom of the funnel by prompting users to take specific actions such as booking a tour, downloading brochures or signing up for newsletters. Some of these wins that we had, going over some of these metrics, we had a total of a million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven impressions in our social ads. Drove twenty thousand clicks to the website. Our average click-through rate, which counts all clicks to the website, to the website page and Bristol Facebook page, was about three point three percent, which was well above the travel industry average of point nine percent. And then the average link click-through rate, so people driving to the site, was one point five six percent. Our average cost per click was around fifty-three percent, which again was below the average of point six three. So really great cost per click there. These ads targeted the DC, Charlotte and Atlanta markets. The interest targeting, so some of the segments that we also were, were able to kind of hone in on were adventure travel, fishing, outdoor recreation, hiking, kayaking, mostly outdoor activities. Our total ad spend was around twenty-three thousand in social ads last year. With our Bristol Casino ad, as you can see here, driving the most website clicks and having the highest click-through rate was a great asset during the shoulder season for travel. And we definitely recommend, you know, running these similar ads again as this is just such a great performance for us. Here's another kind of, couple of examples of our top performing paid social ads, including the Gone Living Casino ad, outdoor ads, the music and history culture, and also some more fishing and outdoor ads. These Gone Living creatives really resonated well with our target audiences. Something that, that we believe that messaging was really imperative and some of these really clean, beautiful images to kind of tell that story. Drove a lot of engagement, comments, shares. Drove a lot of engagement, comments, shares and most importantly clicks to the website to learn more about Bristol and all of the offerings that you have. And next we have paper click or paid search. Paid search drives traffic and conversions. It increases visibility and exposure of tourism destinations to potential visitors. Drives targeted traffic to relevant landing pages and websites. It encourages visitors to take specific actions such as booking accommodations, tours or activities. And allows for precise targeting of potential visitors, again, based on some of those geographic factors, demographics, behavioral factors. And this really ensures that all of your advertising dollars are going to be spent on the most relevant audience that's likely to convert. It works in again at at different points in the funnel, typically towards the bottom of the funnel, but PPC can generate awareness and interest by targeting users who are searching for travel related keywords or browsing travel related content. PPC can also drive consideration and conversions by targeting users who are actively searching for specific destinations or activities. It offers a very high ROI compared to some of the traditional advertising markets. With the ability to target the right audience at the right time with the right messages. And it offers really measurable results, allowing for our DMOs to track the effectiveness of their campaigns and make data driven decisions to optimize their strategies, which is what we're all about at Relic. And then some of our paid search metrics throughout the year. It resulted in 200 and or excuse me, 694,000 impressions. Drove just near 40,000 clicks to our website. The average click through rate was a 5.03%, which was slightly below some of the travel industry average throughout the year of 9.919% kind of get into that. The average click through rate was lower than the travel industry average, which was awesome. It was 70 cents 70 cents for Bristol. The lowest CPC in in Atlanta where the travel industry standard across the board was a dollar and 63 cents. We saw lower CPCs across the board in 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 our target sets. Overall, we had a conversion rate of 22%. Again, looking at quality traffic to the website. Also, we had 75 requests for downloads of the visitor guides. And our conversion rate was absolutely incredible throughout the year with PPC. With a 22% conversion rate where industry conversion rates are typically around 5%. So our total ad spend throughout the year was was just over $24,000. And we do believe that making some adjustments towards these top performing audiences, keywords and ads from 2022, we will see an increase in some of those click through rates and conversions in 2023. And the next slide here, you'll have again our top performing search ads. Search ads can be responsive and switch up some of these creatives and and different types of messaging based on the user. However, most of our top performing search ads throughout the year revolved around some of the casino ads, outdoor activities and food and dining. And then wrapping this up, our our last tactic here is is Performance Max. And what Performance Max is, it's it's essentially a way to utilize and leverage our digital ads and all of the creatives that we have, all of the assets across Google's entire ad product suite. Where this really helps is it creates spending efficiencies throughout the year. Performance Max combines your top performing search, display, video ads and will serve them to the target audiences who are likeliest to convert on your website. In 2022, it resulted in over a million impressions. 21,000 clicks to the website, the click through rate of 1.83%. Was well above the Performance Max click through rate of 1.01% with the highest click through rate in Baltimore. Of a 1.95%. Average cost per click was around 22 cents. Resulted in 4,000 conversions, three requests for visitor guides. Again, we we kind of spread the markets around here with Washington DC, Charlotte, Atlanta, Nashville, Baltimore. And our total ad spend here was a little bit lower as this was, you know, rolled out as a test. It was around $4,686. But this is again, something that we'd like to utilize again is as this can really leverage all of those great creatives and the Gone Living Ads and things like that that we can serve to the right audience at the right time. And then finally, we'll go over just a a couple of our top performing markets. And so a key point here is our top performing markets are considered the geographic regions where our campaign has generated the highest engagement and conversion rates. These markets are not necessarily just limited to city limits. Metro market represents a much larger area such as entire regions or even multiple states. In display, we had DC, Charlotte, Atlanta and Nashville for some of our paid social. Was again, Washington DC, Charlotte, Atlanta and Nashville. In search, the order changes a little bit with DC, Atlanta, Charlotte, Nashville. I guess that doesn't change. So those are kind of our our major ones. And then Performance Max were some of our more testing. Baltimore, Atlanta, Charlotte, DC and Nashville resonated with those. So these are, these are larger areas. They, you know, these geographic regions, we end up getting tailored as we start to put in more audience segments. Our goal here was was really to find those those potential audiences within your short drives or short flight distance that are likely to spend, convert and overnight travelers, which we know are important as they are that market segment that's going to spend the most money in destination. Awesome. And then finally, we wanted to make sure that we included how Relic and Discover Bristol are are kind of changing the game in in terms of of next level technology. And that that comes in with visitor analytics software. And by adding visitor analytics software, a DMO can gain valuable insights into visitors behaviors, which helps them optimize their digital tourism marketing efforts. And essentially what this does and how it works is that our platforms will aggregate data from various sources, including social media, web analytics, device geolocations and market research. It helps destinations and tourism organizations make better, more informed decisions on how to improve your tourism strategies. We utilize this software by tracking and analyzing website traffic, user engagement, conversion rates on websites to identify areas for improvement and make better data driven decisions. We can also measure things like device origins and locations, which means that we can measure actual footfall in your destination. Year over year, we can measure that footfall and directly attribute that to advertising efforts. And also we can benchmark those metrics against DMOs across the nation. So where I think when it comes to the the question of, you know, what is, what does this all mean? Visitor analytics software look to to solve that question by saying, okay, what marketing efforts and how can we attribute this to actual tourism dollars, you know, and who do we see in our destination? So by understanding the the visitors' interests and behaviors, we can create targeted campaigns, personalize content, optimize user experiences that increase engagement and drive more conversions. So something that we're really looking forward to and utilizing in 2023 and really hoping that that this will assist Discover Bristol in in creating more effective digital marketing strategies and assist on achieving their tourism goals. And that is it for our presentation. So I want to say thank you so much to the council for allowing us a minute of their time. And we will turn it back to to you for questions and anything that we can assist.
Yeah, thank you. The the one thing I just wanted to call out that he mentioned at the very end, the visitor analytics software, that's a huge deal for us. We were able to leverage that software through the VTC ARPA funds. Just to give us a better idea of exactly who is coming, who's engaging. We have indicators, whether it's website traffic, social media engagement on our posts, but this piece of software will give us a better idea of exactly who those people are, what they're doing when they get into our footprint. So we can even further optimize the digital advertising campaigns that you saw tremendous results that was beating industry averages in pretty much every single category. And we feel like this visitor analytics software platform can take us to the next level. And that wouldn't be possible without VTC and and the city of Bristol, Virginia to provide us that ARPA fund. So I just wanted to have a special call out for that.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to questions if if that's okay with you. So go ahead and.
I just have a quick question about Relic. Is that a annual contract or is that just ongoing monthly? Or how long will we have them?
We don't have a a signed contract with them. It's just a a working relationship, no agency of record, anything of that nature. They understand some of the funding challenges that we have and they are there to assist us when we need it to be able to execute on some of these marketing campaigns. They've also been doing a lot of work, not not necessarily pro bono, but there to help us. I mean, they have shown time and time again that they are a true partner. That they're not racking up all these hourly agency hours that we're having to pay a bill for. They see the potential that we have here in Bristol. They actually came, I think, two years ago, they had a podcast that they interviewed Jerry from the Speedway and Leah from BCM. But they've even had conversations about potentially opening up an agency here in this area. So I feel like there's an opportunity there to grow that relationship. There's nothing from a long term formal agreement. It's just a partnership that we're working through.
Thank you.
Where are they located?
Utah.
Utah. Have nobody else gonna jump in? So I've got a few questions. So I know you, early on in this presentation, you said that 33 people had requested the visitor's guide from the website. There, as far as I could tell, there's no way to get just a PDF of that on the website. Would that be something y'all could do that would maybe increase those?
It is. It's part of the the new rollout. And I know I've provided a packet with our visitor guide and a lot of other collateral material that's there. But it is something that we're going to have a digital reader more more robust than just a plain PDF that we're going to have link outs from our partners that are a part of the visitor guide as well as our advertising partners that will directly drive them to their website. So that is an additional phase that we're building out with our visitor guide program. Because we do know that there are some people that like paper guides and they want to have that. But the digital piece is an important component. And that's also part of the reason why we built out our mobile app. Because that serves as another pocket guy that you have on your phone all the time.
So several times through this presentation, you all talk about the the areas that you're advertising in. DC, Nashville, et cetera. So are there any areas that you all are advertising into a lesser extent that are not these four? Like, like if you tie it into Love of Mountains or Love of Music in this atmosphere like Austin or places like that, or are you going outside of these four footprints? Or is this kind of where you are?
Predominantly, it's it's these markets. We do have some advertising around maybe some of the events that we've created last year. But really, when you start taking a look at our intent, people that are visiting our website organically, people that are engaging on our social media post, we're really trying to stay honed in on our primary markets. Some of that's budget related. If we had more money, sure, we would love to be able to expand out to additional markets. But we also know that there is a danger of spreading yourself so thin in certain markets that you're not having a penetrating factor. So we're really having to cluster some of our ad spends into the top markets that are showing intent. Those are a lot of those profiles also match up with VTC and the research that they provide as well. So we feel like they are correctly aligned. Baltimore was one that we started to expand in for this year. It showed on the the Performance Max campaign that it was the top performing DMA market that is there. So we, yes, we would love to be able to expand into further markets. That requires money. We would be happy to do that. I I think the one call out too, and it's easy to get lost with some of these markets like Charlotte, for example. People think, oh, well, you're just advertising in Charlotte. Well, the Charlotte DMA actually goes all the way to Boone. So when we're talking about Charlotte, it's not just proper. It is the entire metro market. So we are expanding outside of those four metropolitan or five metropolitan cities. Those those footprints are a much wider swath than than just what that city name is.
So with with the analytics software that you have, I don't know what kind of detail you go into or how you connect the two to other data sets that you have. So is there a way to to determine how many like, how many hotel rooms are generated by ads in DC or ads in Nashville? Or is there is there a way to look and see how many people say, hey, I came to Bristol because I saw this ad?
I'll let Relic speak to that a little bit better because the visitor analytics software platform that we're using. They have a lot of experience with several of their DMO partners. And they have a very close alignment with the the platform company. So they have much more experience and Ryan, I'll I'll defer to you on that one.
Yeah, thanks so much. And Christopher, if you could repeat the question a little bit clearly, your microphone is. I I think I got the gist of it, but it was around the visitor analytics software and specifically how we are measuring the footfall traffic. Is that correct?
Basically, my question was, with the visitor analytics software that you have, does does it give you the opportunity to see? Hey, we ran these ads, we ran this set of ads in this market and it generated X number of hotel rooms. Or it generated X number of visitors. Because I because I know that, you know, if they're seeing it, but are they, are they coming here?
Yes, awesome. Thank you so much for for repeating the question. And and to an extent, yes, there's there's an aspect of correlation. You know, and of course, in in marketing, we can't necessarily say that correlation and causation equal each other all of the time. However, that this analytics software does pull in specific advertising data and geolocation data based off of device categories where people they they basically have a target set of, you know, their their general areas when they move through the areas, if they've seen our marketing advertising efforts or landed on our webpages. We can track that they move through those destinations and and actual and traffic footfall. It pulls in hotel STR data through multiple different sources. We can look at the economic impact boosted year over year from certain DMAs, which allows us to target and basically repeat success. So while it's not necessarily that we can say, you know, person A saw Facebook ad, you know, set and booked a a hotel, I get, or I guess you know, booked a hotel through this destination. We could see that maybe in our Google Ads. By our conversions, tracking where where's this visitor analytics software is allowing us to see correlations between where we likely to see the most success, drive visitation, what the average room night that that people are spending, where the people are coming from, their their DMAs, who's spending the most money based off of card swipes. Your origin market cities. So really what this this tool allows us to do is is replicate success. Find the the users that are likely to convert. What are the demographics that they share and commonalities? How do we market to those people with better tailored messaging that helps convince them to travel or book travel year over year? So there's a lot of different things that we we are allowed to do with this software and and it's been incredibly helpful for a lot of our other DMOs. And we're really, really excited with the with the partnership that we hopefully have coming up with with Discover Bristol and utilizing this software for for 2023.
Thank you. So on to a different topic, on the visitor guides. So I I'd have to guess that these look like they're brand new. How many of these do you print in a year roughly?
For our our run, the initial run, 45,000. And Gene, you might want to pull up the other deck. I can go over some of the information on there.
So you do about 45,000. I know that you provided to me in an email and I appreciate it, this document that you've given to all of us with the locations of where these can be found, right?
Right. It's got, I'm sorry, I pulled up the the deck with some of the routes. This is through print distribution. We've got several of the routes, again, through the tri cities region. We've got several of the routes, again, through the tri-cities region, Knoxville Metro, the New River Yadkin Valley, and some of that Eastern Kentucky, West Virginia portion. So that's through print distribution. This has a map of the Virginia Welcome Centers, that, the 13 that are across the Commonwealth. And one of the other pieces that we're hoping to extend the visitor guide distribution even further is through a grant that we wrote that would be on the I-81 corridor for the safety rest areas, which the average annual traffic counts is about 9 million impressions. So that would further our reach through that program if we were to get the grant.
So aside from those locations, which you're not in yet because of the grant, how long have you been in these other locations?
We have been in those since before my time of being there. We checked in with all of the welcome centers and also with our contact through print distribution to confirm that they have visitor guides. Some of them might have had 25, but every single location had guides. We quickly shipped out some that were running a little bit low. One of our distribution partners through VTC actually has sent up several cases of boxes to their distribution center, so they should be adequately stocked. They have had guides within the footprints that either we have partnerships through or we have had paid placement.
Thank you.
So how many total locations is that, that you have the guides in?
So through print distribution, you're talking about 550, just ballparking a little bit there through their visitor guides. The Virginia Welcome Centers, you're talking 13, and the, there's 13 safety rest area stops that are on that I-81 corridor. We also have welcome guides through a lot of our local partners, whether it's hoteliers, venues, attractions. We service those manually, and they let us know when they're starting to run low and we get those back out to them.
I don't have a question, but just a comment about other cities, other markets. I think the comment you asked maybe was, you mentioned Austin, Texas, and I think there, yeah, maybe there's some opportunity. It seems like it's kind of farther away, like, well, how many people are they gonna come visit here? And we've seen the map before with the circle, like, this is two to three hours, this is five hours. But I mean, our airport, we do have nonstop flights to Dallas, to Orlando. I think they were trying to maybe start one to Chicago or something. So, you know, we get excited when we see those, like, hey, we can go visit there. Maybe those are some marketing areas to show, hey, you can fly here real easily and go to a casino and a race and see music and all right at the same time.
Especially if one of the target ads is luxury travel. Just as a bigger picture question, what's Discover Bristol's budget overall?
Are you talking about just operating budget?
Yeah, how much do you all spend? What's your yearly budget?
For our ads, ad spends?
Overall.
Just overall. About $315,000 is our budget for this year.
So I know you, very specific questions, but you can just answer kind of in general. How does that break down for what you're spending on operations as opposed to what you're spending on sales and marketing?
So when we're talking about our operations expenses, we're looking around $150,000, $160,000. Some of that is through the one-point, eight-five FTE model, but we have continued to reduce expenses. The Chamber has been a fantastic partner as far as not only contributing money to our organization, but looking to cut expenses, the operating expenses, the rent, the utilities, everything to have a place to work. We pay less than our fair share, knowing the challenges that we have right now. So I want to call out that we continue to look for ways to save money on expenses, and the Chamber has been a great partner in assisting with that.
Okay, so basically, we'll say it's about 50/50. You'll spend probably about 150 to 160 in operations and roughly the same, we'll say. Okay.
And of course, that percentage or pie would look better when we have more revenues that are coming in. We certainly have gone through that exercise. We've created, as I mentioned in the last presentation, several events, two food and beverage events and a film festival event to help generate revenue through just attendance and sponsorship. But that's not a sustainable model to be able to run advertising campaigns. I mean, as you can see from both the presentations, you need money to advertise and promote and put Bristol's best foot forward. So we are certainly looking into other funding mechanisms, revenue streams, but some of these pieces are not going to be able to solve big chunks of money that we need from our funding sources.
Anybody else have any other questions?
What are your current visitor center hours?
Our visitor center hours are during our normal operating hours at the Chamber, which is 8:30 to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. But this might be a good opportunity to talk about, and Beth can come up and share some of the information, but we have been working on a renovation, a business and visitor center. Some of our schematic drawings go back to 2020. It's something that the Chamber was working on even before my time. They were working with consultants, and Beth, I feel like you would probably be best to give an update on just what that looks like and what that can mean for us in the future.
Sure. Thank you, Christopher, and Mayor, members of council, thank you all. I'll be very brief. I wanna address one quick thing he mentioned, or you asked about the budget. We're probably about 48% operations right now to overall budget, but if you were to put us in a category, if we had a 650,000 budget, we'd be running about 23% operating. So I think we do a pretty darn good job with the monies that we have compared, you know, if you look at overall budget, we do a pretty darn good job with that. Talking about the visitor center, we had, it was in 2020, and of course, we've had that building. It's paid for, it's owned by the foundation, thanks to a lot of Gold Club members many years ago. It is an old bank building, and some people have said, well, it's looking a little dated. It sits right on the corner of Main and Main. We're right at the crux of historic downtown. We see probably, we're probably the busiest intersection in this entire community. It's also why we have the big guitar there, because if you think, you know, historically, as the story goes, if you tell people, if they say where you're from, if you're on an airplane, well, I'm from Bristol, and you don't think they're gonna know, they go, ah, Bristol Motor Speedway. Everybody knew where Bristol Motor Speedway was, and to this date. That's kind of happened with the guitar as well. It has become such a prominent focal point for this community. I'll talk to folks and they'll say, well, I've been through Bristol, and they're like, where's your office? And I'll say, you know where the giant guitar is? They know where the giant guitar is. And that was a commissioned piece for our 100th anniversary in 2009 that our board thought was really important and significant to our roots here as well. So I say that because it was time for the building to get a facelift, and we talked through that at length, and our board said, look, we're willing to do a capital campaign and raise private money for this to renovate the building. It sits on volunteer parkways, so it's kind of awkward to get in the front door, depending on where you park. Some people don't know how to get in. So our goal was to really turn the front of it facing more toward the State Street side, and that's where a lot of people pull in and park to get their picture taken at the guitar. And so we did some renderings, it was at the end of 2020, and had those, we're excited. We put them up for our board to see. Of course, we know what happened in 2020, so the consultants we were working with said, this is not the time to be embarking on this, you need to put a pause. But our board had already said, too, we saw how our businesses were struggling in this community, that was not the time to start raising money. We had much bigger fish to fry, and really, a lot of things that we did and needed to be doing to really promote and help our small businesses. So put that on hold, but continue to talk about it through all of our meetings. And unfortunately, there were pictures taken, there were notes taken about our being a lobby that was more of a visitor center, and unfortunately, that got away from us. But it didn't get away. We're still doing it. We feel like we are on the corner of Main and Main, and we're still committed to that. We're actually in our board retreat next week. Capital Campaign Committee is reembarking on this effort and re-engaging with our consultants. So we hope to see a really new, fresh look on the Chamber and the newly renovated lobby to really touch more on the visitor and the business side of the house.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions we want to address?
I don't remember from your other presentation. Did you say how many billboards you're covering or markets that you have billboards in?
We currently don't run billboards. It's one of those tactics that can be costly from a production standpoint and running campaigns, what that flight looks like. We feel like the greater impact, as you can see from our campaign, digital advertising, it gives us a much more refined scope from a targeting perspective, whether that's locality, demographic, engagement levels. We were seeing astronomical results from a cost per conversion, our impression count. So we are really staying true to digital marketing. We've had some advertorials, some print ads, some co-ops. We really try to utilize the strategy with print ads, if you will, as advertorials, because it's an opportunity. Some of the advertorials that we did, we were able to showcase 17 to 20 businesses or attractions in the community, and a lot of those businesses would not have the opportunity to be able to get that type of exposure if it weren't for us working as the hub or convener to help get them that exposure. So we generally stay in digital advertising. If we were to branch out in a more traditional approach, some of that would be OTT streaming or through some of the print magazines, that area.
I don't know if our, are the folks from Relic still on the phone? Are they, are they still here?
Shaila, Ryan, you still on? Yeah.
Yeah, we're still here.
I just have a general question, and you all don't need to provide it right now. I'd just like it for informational purposes. These ads that were your better performing ads, could you let me know roughly when those ran? Because I'm just interested in looking at the interaction with them. If you could just maybe get that to Christopher, and he could get that to me.
Yeah, of course. So just to be clear, like, dates of?
Just ballpark it, yeah. Like when they were posted, when they went up, that kind of stuff, yeah. If you could.
We can get that for you.
I appreciate it. Are there any other questions?
I've got one. I do have, actually, two, I think, so bear with me. So going back to the brochures, I know as the DMO for the city, you all have so many spots across the state that are provided as the DMO. Are we in all those locations? Is that correct?
Yes, that was the information that we literally called all the welcome centers last week just to verify that they had everything. And some, I think there was one location, I was down to 25 guides, but there was none that told us we're out of guides.
Good to know. Second question, another thing that we've talked about previously is the bus conferences, ABA, things like that. I know it costs to get there. I know there's some opportunities through VTC and other organizations to get part of that covered. Is that something that, I know it's in the book, possibility things, is that something that's gonna happen this year?
Yeah, it's certainly something that we're considering. We had conversations with VTC about ABA. When I spoke to Joni Johnson, who's over, some of the group travel, she said there was an opportunity to volunteer, that we wouldn't have to pay for the booth, we could work within their booth, but you couldn't schedule, you couldn't book, I guess, meetings with the travel tour operators that are there. So we just didn't feel like, even with a little bit of a reduction in expense, it didn't make sense from that perspective. We've talked to some partners to see if there's interest there. I will also say, though, having some conversations with some of the hoteliers here in Bristol, they don't necessarily love the group tours. Some of them have tried to get down on the group price that the tour operators are looking for, and they just can't drop that low, especially for the average daily rates that they're getting right now. As you can see with the lodging tax collections, it grew $530,000 or 41% last year. A good deal of that is because of the average daily rate, how much someone was paying to stay at a hotel. So I've heard various feedback from our hotelier partners on, do they enjoy that? Should we be spending our money going after group travel? I still think it's something to consider, but I do want to just put that out there that is some of the feedback that we have received. But I also feel like if we are to do group travel, it's something that we should probably consider looking at other events to where there's not duplication of efforts of two Bristols being at the same group travel show. Not only is that confusing, but it's also money that we can maybe spend somewhere else. So it certainly is on the consideration model. Some of that will come down to funding and what that looks like, but yes, it is something that we do have there.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Oh, Beth, do you have something else?
Sorry?
Yeah.
And thank you for allowing me. I just wanted to make one comment because it's something that Christopher's not gonna talk about, and it can't be emphasized enough. You see the room full of people standing behind, or sitting behind us. When you don't have a lot of money to put into advertising, Christopher has taken the responsibility of what a DMO is to do, which is to build strong relationships with all your tourism partners and make sure that you're benefiting everyone, and to make sure that they feel a part of the product, that they feel like that they're getting what they need to be successful. And of all times for that to have been important, he took that opportunity when maybe he didn't have the money to spend, but to also work on that side of it to make sure that this community is as attractive to not just visitors who come here, but to businesses who come here looking to relocate and to the residents of our community itself. And that's part of a strategy that is important as a DMO, and I think all of these folks behind us are here and representative of what he did on that. And we talk about this a lot, and he's very humble, but that has been developed better than it's ever been developed in the history of, I think, the DMO in this community. And I credit him for taking the time and the work to do that. So thank you.
Thank you all very much. All right. So next thing we're going to do is our closed session. Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, Code of Virginia in 1950 is amended. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, parenthetical personnel. Looking for a motion in a second.
I move we go into closed session for the reasons stated.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Farnham, second by the Vice Mayor. Call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
By roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
There being no further business, we stand adjourned.